You're going to get a 15-second warning when you have 15 seconds left. And a stop when your time is up. Following the opening statements, we'll go right into Q and A. I do want to let you know, we sent out an email to our membership and our community info database, and we got some really great questions. Quite a few questions, so questions that you'll be answering today have been submitted by the Chamber, the Coalition for Community Justice Youth Leaders, and the community at large. George, we'd like to begin our opening statement, so you're first.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I want to express my gratitude to the Chamber of Commerce and all of you who are here today. This time of the pandemic has really thrown a lot of us off in terms of what we would consider normal. So it's nice to be able to have this for the members of the community to get to better know us. And thank you to our youth leaders, it's great to see the youth involved. I know I don't only speak for myself, but just to give you a little background on my own life. So I'm a lifelong resident of Madera. I graduated from Madera South in 2015, so just five years ago. Five years ago this last June. And I graduated in May with a bachelor's from Mount Angel Seminary, a double major in philosophy and religious studies. And as you can tell by the name Mount Angel Seminary, I was studying to be a Catholic priest for the last five years. It was a journey that I saw myself in for the rest of my life. I knew that my call in life, if you will, was to serve people. I thought it was to serve people in the capacity as a Catholic priest. During my time in what we call the seminary formation, I realized that my desire to serve people grew from just people inside the church and to serve our community, to serve our nation. And what better way to do that than by being engaged in a role of public service? I've had the honor, I'm 23 years old. I've had the honor of being involved in many different leadership boards, whether it's national organizations or founding my own nonprofit, experiences that have taught me to be a prepared leader, an equipped and responsible leader, and to take every opportunity to make a difference for our community.
Okay, Derek, you're up.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Robinson. I've lived in Madera City for over 30 years and have served on the Madera City Council for two terms. During my term as city councilman, I have helped create shelter for homeless families that promote a ranch, plus making our police and fire departments second to none. I have advocated for the creation of jobs, housing, businesses, and education. I served at Mayor Pro Tem in 2014, one year as chairman of the Madera Housing Authority, eight years as first vice president of the League of California Cities, South San Joaquin Division, in which I represented over 35 cities as an advocate for city empowerment. Some of the communities I've served on were administrative services, housing community, and housing economic development. These experiences have enabled me to gain knowledge to effectively serve Madera as your city councilman. First of all, I have been in public service since I enlisted in the military during the Vietnam War. After my enlistment, I attended the University of California, Berkeley, and thereafter, graduation, I worked for the U.S. Postal Service and various juvenile detention facility. During my spare time, I coached track and field for numerous colleges, high schools, including Madera High School. My priorities are bringing in businesses that pay living wages, reducing water rates by spreading the cost to the newer development, and maintaining a solid law and order police force. Thank you for letting me serve you.
You're muted, Debbie. Debbie, you need to unmute.
I am next on the list. Debbie, if you'd like me to proceed, I can do that.
Thank you. I didn't realize I was muted. That's gonna look great on YouTube. Thank you, Jose. Please proceed.
Yes, well, thank you, Debbie. First of all, let me go ahead and thank the Chamber and staff for putting this forum together and also having the youth involved in this. I think it's important for our community to know that there's people that really care and want to engage in our community, so thank you again. Let me start off by saying I am Jose Rodriguez. I am your current city council member representing District Two. I was born and raised in the Central Valley. I moved to Madera and started my business in real estate finance back in 2005. My wife, Camina, and I have been married for over 19 years. We raised our children, Vincent and Vivian, in this beautiful city. We weathered the 2008 recession and our business survived and thrived through the last 10 years. I'm resilient, and this is what I brought to the city council. I've served as a trustee for the Madera Unified School Board from 2010 into 2014. I am the current president of the Greater Madera Kiwanis. I serve as your chair for the Public Housing Authority, vice chair for the Madera County Transportation, and more importantly, I am your city council member. With the knowledge and experience that I brought to the city, I feel that I've been able to move this city forward. I am a resident, a father, a husband, a property owner, landlord, business, and most importantly, a public servant wishing to make our community a lot better place for future generations. Thank you for this time, Debbie.
Thank you, Jose. Donald?
Well, thank you. Thanks, Chamber. Wow, glad to be included after two terms. My name is Donald E. Holly. I'm a resident of Madera, born and raised, went to all the Madera schools, graduated from Fresno City College in 1971 as an automotive mechanic. Most of all, I served our community. Served as a planning commission, served as NAACP. I was the president of that organization for over 10 years. And my main focus was, I ran the Jesse Young Games of Madera to teach development and love and leadership to our teens from three to six years old. Throughout the 28 years that I've done this, I met and served on different boards like CAPMC, advisory board, all boards that served Madera Housing Authority, chair of that, Pro Tem for the city council. And not knowing all that, I'm first African American to ever been served on a planning committee, I mean, a city council. But my family was here, my grandmother, grandfather owned the first gas station here in Madera on South Eighth Street that nobody knows nothing about, but let you know, we rooted. I tend the Second Missionary Baptist Church, where I serve as a deacon of our church. And most of all, I serve you as your city councilman for the last eight years. Getting your support will help me to continue the journey and love that I have for Madera in my upcoming years. I didn't want to repeat everything everybody else has said, but I've done all those things as well. I am the oldest one on the city council, and I'm still here to teach them love, value, and harmony with one another. Thank you very much, Chamber, for putting this on for us today.
Thank you. Welcome, Anita. Unmute.
Oh, I know. Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Thank you. Anita was in the waiting room, so thank you for joining us. And we are on opening statements. So it is now, you now have a minute and a half for your opening statement, and then we will go to Q and A.
Okay, very good. Well, first and foremost, let me thank you, each of you, for allowing me to be here in front of you today and to just share my life with you and to just share a few things that I would like to see done here in Madera. I am the mother of two. My son is eight, my daughter is Alicia, and she's deceased for 10 years now. She had lung cancer. I'm the grandmother of five and the great-grandmother of five as well, and two in the wings waiting to be born. I was born in Los Angeles, moved to Bakersfield, raised there, lived there for 20-plus years after being married, giving birth to my children. And I relocated to Jackson, Mississippi, where I went to work for the YMCA as a childcare director, and then on to be outreach director for teens in crisis. From there, I moved to Mount Pocono, Pennsylvania, and I'm a mover, so you guys get used to that. I moved to Mount Pocono, Pennsylvania, and there I worked as a social director, wedding coordinator, and then a catering manager. From there, I moved after the death of my mom. Each time I've moved is because someone has passed in my family. I moved to Chicago and worked for the railroad, okay? And at that time, I was a program director and also a damage investigator. So for me, I'm quite versatile. I pinpoint things, I'm, you know, very investigative, and I'm busy. So thank you very much, and I'm ready.
Okay. We're gonna start with the Q and A now, and the Madera Youth Leaders will have the first three questions. A reminder, you will get a minute each with a 15-second warning to stop, and you'll get a bright red stop sign when it's time to end your response. And the first question, in order, we will go to Derek Robinson, and then we'll again follow through alphabetically and we'll continue to rotate. I'm gonna turn it over to Madera Youth Leaders for the first question.
How long have you lived in Madera? Tell me your experience in local community service and government involvement.
Yes, I've been involved, and I've been living in Madera for about 30 years now. And when I first started working for the Postal Service and Juvenile Hall, I transferred down here back in 1992. And so while I was working at Juvenile Hall, I was injured. So I had to go out on disability. Now, I talked to Supervisor Max, and he said, well, your past experience with coaching and working with young kids, you'd be good working for the youth in the city. And so then I got on one of the commissions, and then I found out about the Citizen Academy. And I attended that, and then I ran for office. And during my time in office, I worked for the San Joaquin League of Cities, where I rose up to be their first vice president. I worked in various committees and worked with the youth in the city. Thank you.
All right, Jose.
Debbie, I'm gonna have the young girls ask me that question one more time, please.
Sure.
Get some comfortable and ask them questions in front of people as well. Thank you.
How long have you lived in Madera? Tell me your experience in local community service involvement.
I've been doing business in the city of Madera since 2001. I moved out here, like I said earlier, in 2005, and since the day I've been in Madera, I've been active in the community. So currently, I serve as the president for the Greater Madera Kiwanis, and we also serve as advisors for the school, both in South and Madera High. We participate in the Madera Robotics as well. We always fundraise for them through our advisors that we have in our club. But most importantly, you know, I've been part of the school board for, I was part of the school board back in 2010 to 2014, because one of the things that's important to me is education. The biggest thing that attracts employers to Madera is the skill set that we have and what we produce. And there's nothing like the next generation that's gonna be here in the city of Madera, and that's you guys. That's you guys, just like my kids. My kids are gonna be the future of Madera. And if we don't focus on that solid foundation of education, then we can never have a thriving community. And that's exactly why I believe in education. That's why I believe that we continue to partner up with our school districts to make this a better place for our community. Thank you for the question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Anita.
I think it's Don.
Yes.
We're going back into the alphabetical order, so Anita, you're up on the question. Do you need the question repeated?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
How long have you lived in Madera? Tell me your experience in local community service and government involvement.
I've lived here in Madera now since 2013, and I serve as a volunteer for the Madera Community Hospital, where I am the first black vice president of the League of Audillery of Volunteers. I also serve at my church as a social ministry director, and also I'm the Sunshine Girl for Madera Community Hospital. As far as being here and the politics, I'm a layperson. But what brought me to doing this was, I was driving down the street one day, and I ran into a pothole. And when I did that, my car kind of shoveled. So I was like, okay, so who do I need to contact to have this fixed? And I called different people, and then they told me that, well, your city council person is the one that's responsible for it. So after checking around, I chose that maybe this is something that I could do. I see that the streets need to be improved, our schools need to be improved. There's things that need to be done, so I thank you.
Donald?
Yes, I don't need your question repeated. I have done so many things in Madera that would have to sit down the whole day to follow. I can tell you about all of them. But my passion is kids. I've always loved to develop kids, even in our churches and in our communities. I've served on the park boards to make sure kids have a safe place to play. But most of all, I love Madera. My church will tell you all of it. I love Madera. I was born and raised here. I'm the oldest one in the group. And I do that for knowledge, to teach our city what can be done. Besides behind politics, we need love and affection. So if you tell somebody that you love them and mean it, our city can grow. I was the first African American that went before both boards to make sure that they put prayer before saluting the flag, because we have to honor our sacred pride and support go through all that. So as I got into church, I had kids that I was continually to teach and develop. I worked at Juvenile Halls to help kids to get them in and out. I worked for different judges, talked to kids to get them on the right path. So as Madera grows, I want to grow, and I want your peoples to grow. Thank you very much.
George?
Thank you for your question. So I have been a lifelong resident of Madera. Like I mentioned, I'm 23 years old. My experience in Madera has been one that has formed me into the leader, not only in the community, but in all through our nation that Madera instilled in my heart. I was involved in FFA at Madera South High School. I was involved in Link Crew. I was involved in multiple groups. My biggest involvement, however, and where a lot of people recognize me from, is from my involvement in church, whether it was in community service events with my earlier years with the youth ministry or growing up into helping the Right to Life Ministry with their own particular events. In terms of government experience, I have had the blessing of being able to speak in the halls of the Senate, in chambers of the Senate, of the United States Senate over in Sacramento. And I've been involved in our city government the last four years, watching city council meetings constantly on YouTube and other platforms where they're available, and seeing how I can be of better service, how I can help our city grow and be a prosperous, a hopeful, and such a courageous town, one that we all want to be a part of, where it's not just a pass-by thing, but a feeling, a feeling that we get of love for our city.
Thank you. Derek?
Yes, I already answered the question, right?
Did I do that? My apologies. Okay, we're gonna move on.
I can add more to it, though.
No. Gotta stick with our rules. So Anita, you'll be first up to ask the next question, and the Madera Youth Leaders have also have our next question. Is it Jose?
Yes, that is me. I'd be answering the question based on the.
I got ahead of myself. Hey, Madera Youth Leaders, you wanna go with the second question, please?
Yes. The second question is, what qualities about yourself do you think you have that would make you a good leader for our city? And what do you feel are your weaknesses?
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. One of the weaknesses that I've had, I'll say that first, is always trying to get out there and maybe articulate in the best way possible. But my strengths are always my passion. You know, like I said, I've served on the school board for four years, and I've given this city everything that I brought here. You know, my experience in finance in the last 20 years obviously makes me a budget hawk to look at every single dime nickel that we spend in our city. Everything from job creation, from public service, private, public safety, those things are super important for me, because my kids are born here, my kids were born here, my kids are going to school here. And I have to, as a vested resident, father, business owner, I gotta make sure that I provide a platform for them for when they get older, something that Madera can come back to. Now, there's a lot of talent out there, but if you don't continue to grow this city, then, you know, they seek elsewhere. And one of the strengths that I bring to this community is my resiliency, my struggles, my battle scars that I brought, being able to make tough decisions. That's not something that you generate over a period of a year, but a period of over a tenure of working with public service. So thank you.
Okay, Anita.
Again, please, the question?
Yeah. So the question is, what qualities about yourself do you think you have that would make you a good leader for our city? And what are your weaknesses?
Qualities are, I taught school for over 20 years. And in doing that, I know that I have to reach out to the young people as well as to the elders. In our city here in Madera, which I love, I came here and fell in love with the city. And the thing about it is, is that when you walk into a store and people greet you and say hello, then you greet them back, then that makes you feel warm and welcome. There's things that need to be done around here. The streets need to be repaired. We need senior groups. We need things for our young people to do. Children are sitting at home right now. Some have no internet, some need, you know, education, and the teachers, I feel bad for them. So I would love to be able to go into the schools myself and just give them. First and foremost, my weakness is the hug. And right now, we can't give hugs because of COVID. So I just feel that we need to strive to do better and to change Madera and to make it a place where, when people come in, that they would really want to live here and give them something to look forward to. And I thank you very much.
Donald?
Yes, thank you. Good question. My values that I love about Madera, for once of all, this is my home. I've served on different committees. I'm a veteran. I was married to my wife for over 40 years, but I just lost a few months ago. But it's showing love and compassion for your family as well as for your city. I've taken the city under my wings to go around and talk with folks and find out what we can do better. And serving as your councilman, I have served and done a lot of great qualities. We opened a lot of stores. We did a lot of ribbon cutting. We got a lot of businesses coming through us all these years, not only as your city councilman, but as your planning commissioner as well. So I thank you for being here to ask us these questions, to let folks know visually what we're about. And we're about serving Madera, loving Madera. And if you have those two, you can care for Madera, put things right. So thank you again very much for being our questionnaires today.
All right, George?
Monica, thank you for your question. One of the strongest qualities that I feel in my own life that has prepared me for this moment is a strong sense of passion and a passion that I have to see this city thrive. We see a changing California economy that is challenging us to be more receptive to welcome businesses and other like-minded industries, or not, Madera's gonna fall behind the curve. So passion, a strong passion to serve our city. I think Donald mentioned a great, a love for our city, because that puts the city's interests before me. One of the qualities that I see also that comes with, I would say, my age is persistence. If I see that something needs to be done, well, I'm sorry for whoever has to hear from you, but they're gonna hear it until that's done. So persistence to encourage that the quality of life of our city for our residents is good. And with that also come weaknesses. My persistence could also be a weakness, where I become a little too persistent, but it's all in an effort to make our city a greater place to live in, not only for those of us that live here, but for businesses and for also our guests, so that we invite them back. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Derek?
Yes, my main qualities are being an activist, because I'm not afraid to approach a problem and discuss it. You know, many times I have went before the city council, before I was elected, and voiced my opinion concerning water and high-speed rail. Plus, as being a veteran, you know, I joined the draft in order to serve my country. Another, and I'm motivated to do action, to do what I have to do in order to make it go right. I have the patience to do it, and also I've been a coach, and coaching kids and being a motivation role model for them. Thank you.
All right, we'll start the next question with Anita, and Madera Youth Leaders has this question.
Okay, so the third question is gonna be, what type of financial education and/or experience do you have that lends itself to helping to oversee the safeguard city finances?
My business is, I'm a wedding coordinator. So in order to be a wedding coordinator, you must be able to organize a wedding, to be able to know where to go, where to spend, what the cheapest route you can go, the most frugal thing that you can do, and to organize and to be able to get a wedding off in two weeks if it's necessary. So as far as I'm concerned with Madera, Madera is like a person. You're born, you're raised, and you get old. So with doing that, you have to have love. The thing about it is, is that when you're a baby, you know, everyone loves you, okay? When you grow up, then you're still loved because you have your family. But when you get old, then you have to worry about what's going on. We have downtown that we need to work on, and it takes money, but it still needs to be taken care of. Take care of the old, take care of the seniors, take care of home first, and then move on. Thank you very much.
Donald?
Yeah, well, tough questions you ladies have come up with.
I'm bringing.
Get harder.
I bring about experience, leadership, mostly all common sense. I have been in Madera all of my life, and I've seen a lot of things. I've walked these streets of Madera, so I'm not just talking, I've done it. As I say, I was born here. I wanted to make a change. I wanted to see something different. As teaching kids in the Jesse Young Games, I thought there would be a better quality by doing it with Sean in government. The government is not like our private business. Government suddenly turns with time. You have to start somewhere to get somewhere. And always remember, you're not in this program by yourself, because we need all of us to work together on one common goal to make Madera a better place.
Thank you. George?
And thank you for your question. To summarize it, just in a very brief statement, I look at spending money as if I were spending my own money. And I believe in a strong sense of fiscal responsibility, safeguarding, because especially with like taxes, for example, those are hard-earned dollars of our field workers, of our CEOs, you know, of our administrative, from the lowest level to the highest level employee. It's hard-earned money, so guarding that is very important to me. In terms of my own background, as I mentioned, I belong to nonprofit boards, and part of a responsibility of a board member, including my own nonprofit, is to ensure that we're meeting profit and loss reports and that our profit is higher than our loss. Now, that means evaluating, if we're building something, do we have to have the best of material that's gonna cost us twice as more as what the standard costs is? Little examples like that. So spending money, when it comes to spending money, I see it as spending money for myself. Do I want to waste people's money? Or do I want to empower every single penny that they earn from hard-earned labor? Thank you for your question.
Derek?
Yes, you know, like, education is lifelong. I always believed that. You know, I attended UC Berkeley because it was one of the best public schools in the nation. And I've been on different boards, for instance, United Way Board. And we had to oversee the budget, you know, in order for nonprofit. And as a track and field coach, I was the head coach at King River College. I had responsibility overlooking budget, making sure that we didn't go over our budget. Another thing is, I attended Soul Price School of Public Policy at USC, and that was back in 2016, you know, in order to be able to be, what do you say, overlook different budgets and being able to account for our public funds. And like I said before, education is lifelong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And girls, I'll tell you what, that's one of the best questions you've asked. Thank you so much for asking that because that actually hits home. That's what I bring to the table. In 20 years in finance, I mean, I've been through it all. The toughest decisions in the school board, you know, having to revamp an after-school program, having to revamp a child nutrition program, to bring Brett, better, better nutrition to our kids, having to cut executive salaries at the city of Madera, having to, you know, how do we bring jobs? What, what, what questions are we asking? We all love Madera. We're all passionate and that's great. But the number one question that you ask is how are you going to make this happen? You have to have finance background and I think I bring that to the table more importantly because this is what's going to give us the opportunity to make the cuts and make the decisions that we have to make uh, in a level to bring Madera to where it has to be. You know, it, it's easy to say yes to everything, but if you don't have that background, you don't have that, uh, uh, sense of, uh, financial, uh, fiduciary responsibility, then it's really hard to do that. I do the same thing at my home. I do the same thing at my business and I do it here at the city. And if you look at my track record, that's exactly what I bring to the table. That's my strength there. And you asked that earlier. So financial background has a lot to do because you need to bring that common sense when it comes to making tough decisions in your city. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next question, which will be asked by Belba Barrett, Chair of the Board of Directors for the Madera Chamber. And the first person to respond to her question will be Donald Hawley.
I knew it.
What steps have you and/or will you take to address the issue of the increasing problem of homelessness in the city of Madera? What plans do you have for the homelessness to stop the loitering around the city, local businesses, and especially in the river?
Wow, and I had to be first. No. That's something that we all have to take on as a city. I've been in all different states in this last five years and I've seen the homeless always, everywhere. It's not only here in California, it's all over our nation. But how do you solve it? Is there an answer? I haven't decided on that yet because I don't know the answer. I know, but we have to do it like an elephant, take one bite at a time to try to work toward that. Our rivers that they live in, we have to find them affordable places to live. Everybody say build new homes, but when you build them, you're not bringing it down to their level. So we have to find a way that they can come out the river and be homeless free. And the only way we can do that as a team, as all, not just the city council, but all boards in our state and our county and our cities come together because this is a worldwide situation. So to talk about Madera, thank you, Debbie. It takes a lot and I've gave it over 30 years of my service already. And I continue to do that because you have to have a passion for what you believe in. I thought after losing my wife I would quit, but it gives me more challenges now to make sure that Madera is not left behind. Thank you very much.
George?
Belba, thank you for your question. This is something that, an issue that hit, that hits home, uh, an issue that I, that I find very personal based on my experience in Portland and seeing the homeless situation rise, coming to Madera and seeing those exact patterns come to life here. It's very, it's, it's a very worrying, worrisome thing that, you know, we run on this for campaign terms constantly and there's nothing done. Now, I don't believe in just giving and giving and giving resources. I think we never want anyone to go hungry addressing that, you know, we, we ought to provide food and shelter if that's what the city can provide. But there's a greater issue here and that is there is a rise in drug addiction and mental health issues. A question we can ask ourselves and something I hope to ask the city council while on city council is what mental health issues to overcome mental health and to overcome drug addiction are we providing to those residents, to those homeless so that we can help them rise out of homelessness? We have to allow them to come out of homelessness themselves with our cooperation, not forcing them and also being firm, keeping our city clean, ensuring the public safety, having people running around the river is, you know, important. Little things like that is what I hope to bring to the table, attacking the root issues and not the symptom.
Derek?
Yes, um, you know, I, I have respected the homeless in the riverbed with, with, which are chief of police. And we talked to them and, and, and there is a lot of problems concerning homelessness. For one, drugs. In fact, we even arrested a person there that was a drug dealer, right there in the riverbed. Another thing is mental health. A lot of people are, um, since they, uh, they closed the mental health facilities. They have a lot of mental health people walking around who need to be, um, in shelters where they can be helped. Because letting them walk the streets is enable them to, uh, their health to go down. Another thing is obeying rules. A lot of them don't even want to obey the rules. They don't want any rules whatsoever. And, and it's high cost of living. That's another reason why people are homeless. Um, people are living paycheck to paycheck. You know, I, I would like to, uh, like for instance, open place, place the homeless in one section of the city that is walls and, and, and safe with shelter for them and their property. And, and, and it's, 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 the problem is nationwide, not only nationwide or worldwide.
Derek?
Yeah.
It's, we're all so passionate about that. I mean, we could probably talk about that for the next week and still not be done.
Yeah.
Except us, Jose.
Uh, thank you, Debbie. You're absolutely right. This is not a one-minute solution for homelessness, but rather just to kind of, uh, just tap into it and, and mainly try to reach some type of consensus that, uh, yes, there is issues out there with homelessness, but I heard the word root earlier. And yes, the, the root of a lot of this here, um, you know, one can say it's mental health and what have you, but the truth is poverty. You know, San Francisco has put up a, a study showing that over 26% of the people that are in, are homeless are because of lack of work. So again, I challenge the folks here. What have we brought to the table? What can we bring to the table in order to create economic opportunity for our folks? That's what I'm doing at the city council. I'm trying to bring that to the city council as a measure before the city also add additional revenues to be able to streamline and bring ways of bringing additional income, additional opportunities. We need to create opportunities for this, for, for, for the issues here. And, and, and yeah, we, we're not going to throw more funding at it because the more funding is only going to put a band-aid on it. You know, I'm working with county right now, CAPMC. We have this affordable housing project that we just established downtown. We have to find different opportunities, yes. But it requires partnership and really attacking the root of the, uh, problem, which is lack of opportunity. Thank you.
Anita. Anita?
Yes. Well, I can speak firsthand on the river. The river runs right behind my house. So I hear the children crying. I hear the families out there with their families. I hear the people that are walking back and forth, talking in the middle of the night. I see the drug dealers that are going on. We need a project to be able to help these young people. I am so proud that there is a facility that's going over on C and Fifth Street to help the young people. But in order for us to do that, we need to reach out to them. My partner and I, we go off into the riverbeds ourselves, actually taking food and water and speaking to these young people, speaking to the older people that are out there. We go to Lyons Park and we give food away. We give clothing away. You know, so in order for us to be able to do better, we have to go out and reach out to them. We need the finances. And we need this committee here to come together as one and figure out something to be done as far as helping out the young people, helping out the homeless and giving back to Madera and letting us take care of the homeless people because they are without food, money and shelter.
Thank you. Belba, you have the next question and George will be the first to respond. And you're on mute, Belba.
There we go. The City of Madera Planning Commission meeting, Starbucks was approved to go into the Old Long John Silver's location. Understanding that vacancy will happen, this property has sat for nearly a year unmaintained. Trash, homeless, tall weeds, dead vegetation are just a few of the issues with that property. What will you do to ensure this isn't the case with other vacant properties in Madera?
Belba, thank you for your question. I think that is an issue as you alluded to, it's not only an issue with the Long John Silver's location. It's an issue all through the city. Look at downtown. There is, there's, there's a growing issue of a lack of maintenance. Now, I believe that the city needs to take responsibility for that and either needs to, uh, ensure that the property owner takes responsibility for their own, for their own property. But there's also so much opportunity, I think Anita mentioned it earlier, is to involve our youth, to get our youth involved. And it's, you know, there's such good opportunities, but when it comes to city beautification, that phrase often used to make the city beautiful, I think we need to hold business owners accountable for their businesses. We need to hold property owners accountable for their property. In particular with that Starbucks is, you know, we, we keep saying we want businesses and we're welcoming businesses, but how much are we actually doing that? Are we staying on top of these things or are we just looking right by? So addressing that, and again, the city needs to be persistent on these things. It's important to show compassion, but we need to hold firm ground when it comes to those. So ensuring that the property owners, business owners are working with the city hand in hand to address those issues immediately.
Thank you. Derek?
Yes, um, for vacant properties, when we had, um, you know, for instance, uh, our organization in order to, um, improve the city and the, and the governor took that away. And so a lot of the property have been, uh, overcome with weeds and vandalism, whatever. But we passed a rental inspection, which required property owners to maintain their property. And, 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 and aloha and below, oh, and below, um, they have, they've been doing it. And, um, and, and more is required in order to do that. And, um, and, and the properties that are really, uh, behind and, and, um, and, 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 and fees, you know, people are buying the property and sooner or later of it, um, all these properties will be, um, through, uh, be generated, uh, will be, we say, um, brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Jose?
Uh, thank you, Debbie. And, you know, just like running a business, you know, you have to be able to provide service to your community. And because we're in the public sector, that does not give us an exemption of, of trying to, uh, get away from not, uh, beautifying our community. So whenever we have a business partner wanting to do something, we have to be able to make the place attractive. We have code enforcement now and we always encourage our residents through our, either Neighborhood Watch or National Light Out. We always encourage our business, even business, uh, uh, business, uh, meetings that we have through our community, we're always encouraging our businesses to go ahead and, and let us know when a problem like that is, uh, is, is out in the open so that we can take it, take care of it and have our, our city police and so, uh, uh, city code enforcement to, uh, to take care of that and, and find the, uh, the owners of that property. But more importantly is providing the service, providing the service to our community like no other business. We have to be there, provide the delivery of customer service. We, we are not exempt, uh, from, from providing that service. So that's, that's my, my, my comments on that. Thank you.
Anita?
Can you repeat the question again, please? Muted. He's muted.
Belba, you're on mute. There we go. Okay. The City of Madera Planning Commission meeting, Starbucks was approved to go into the Old Long John Silver's location. Understanding that vacation will happen, that vacancy will happen, this property has sat for nearly a year unmaintained. Trash, homeless, tall weeds, dead vegetation are all just a few issues with that property. What will you do to ensure this isn't the case with other vacant properties in Madera?
Well, thank you very much for that. Yes, that, that property has sat. There's also properties that sit on Yosemite, as George indicated. There's properties that sit on Cleveland. One in particular on Cleveland is right on the corner of Cleveland and Lake. I would love to see something to go in there. In order for us to be able to do better, we have to go and address what we have already. We continue want to build farther, but we need to go back home. We need to start down on Yosemite and remove some of the boards that are there and hold the, hold the owners accountable for what they do have. And try to bring in something else that's there. Build Yosemite, make the home a place that people want to come and want to live here in Madera. Make it worth bringing others in. Thank you.
Donald?
Well, you know, if we look back over our city, we always say what we would like to do or I can do, but it's not about us, it's about we. As we look at this city, it's what we want to see done. I look at our city that goes out there and it sits in the background and just wondering what's happening instead of coming to the forefront and telling us what they want done. We're elected by the people. And for the people, that means we have to come together as people to make sure these blight areas don't detriment our city. We need to all work together. We can't just blame the property owner because then he's going to blame the other owner that they're not getting it done. Everybody want to pass the buck. But if we all come together and sit down and talk, the ways of the improving, how can we all work together and make it happen? We know finance is an issue right now. So where do we start? It's not always city councils, but it's you people who are elected of to do the right thing. So come and tell us what you would like to see done at our meeting. Thank you very much. Beat you.
Okay, we, we're going to skip our, I'm going to skip our next question that Belba had and we're going to go to the Madera Youth Leaders for your next question. But then we're going to skip the youth leaders' next question because it's a duplicate of a question down below. So I'll help guide you through that. So, um, Madera Youth Leaders, you have the next question regarding the candidates.
Okay, perfect. So the next question is going to be candidates always talk about low-income housing and homeless. But what can you say about bringing more upscale business to town? Madera is way behind in realtors and restaurants. We work hard for our money and we want to spend it locally.
I do want to make correction, uh, is Madera is way behind in retailers and restaurants. That's okay. That, but we can also include realtors. So first to respond to that question is Derek.
Oh, so you're talking about the upscale business, business and retail? Okay, um, well, right, right now, um, it, it'd been approved for the, um, the casino to be built and they will bring a lot of businesses and restaurants. And plus we, we, uh, the city already have put in for Love, uh, Truck Stop and, and that's bringing in business. And a hotel will be built there. And plus we have, um, uh, Village D. There can be more homes being built there so it can be more people in order to attract more businesses to come into the city. And, 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 and then you'll have, uh, more storage being built. And, and it, it would be a, what you say, it might price a lot of people out of Madera. You know, when you talk about, about gentrification, people will move in from a big area to move into Madera in order to, like they've been doing for years, in, in order to take, uh, um, to buy the, all, all the, our low-priced homes. You know, in, in big areas, the homes are going for a million dollars. It's just like in LA. But, but where can you go and buy a house for $300,000? Yep. Thank you.
Jose?
Thank you, Debbie. And, you know, that hits home. Thank you so much because this is what I, this is what I'm passionate about. So to answer your question, it's disposable income. How much income is left over after all the expenses are paid? What is our median income here in Madera? If I told you it was between $40,000 to $45,000, that doesn't give you a lot of that income. Compared to Clovis, that's $80,000 per family. That's a huge difference. That then constitutes the amount of retailers that want to come buy you. Do you want to attract 99 cent stores or do you want to attract Targets? Do you want to attract Costco's? So what happened, what's happening with Madera? Madera is a great employer. It employs a lot of its teachers. It employs a lot of its police officers, city and county employees, but guess what? They don't live here. Why? We're not doing a good job. It starts with education. And I've always said this before, our foundation is our education, but more importantly, if you can create job opportunity, if you can incentivize those people to stay here, guess what? Our disposable income increases and then you get everything that you're asking for, the fine dining, the Targets, the Costco's. And that's what I bring to the table. That's the difference between this platform here. And that's what I bring to the table. That's the difference between this platform here. Thank you.
Anita.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Okay, no, as far as bringing things to Madera. First and foremost, you have to be able to supply people with something you want, supply and demand. You want larger facilities here, bring malls here. Young people, if they don't do anything else, they're going to shop, okay? Our restaurants, what do we have? We have, and no disrespect, but we have very few places for us to be able to go. But in order to be able to do that, you have to have homes for our young people to come. And that's what it starts with the youth. Our young people are the ones that are going to continue to build Madera. We have to have schools for our young people to be able to bring their babies in. In order for us to be able to have employees to live here and work here, we have to supply them with jobs to be able to give to them. So we can't expect people to want to live in Madera if you have nothing to give to them. Give them jobs, give them homes and give them schools for their children. I'm so proud right now that the college now is also a full facet. And I just want to thank you for your question.
Donald.
Well, y'all asked some tough questions. I was wondering to answer that. But you know, all of you are right. Everybody answered it in the right way. Everybody said the right things. And I feel that they are right. We have to have something for people that want to come to Madera. Why build homes when you don't have jobs? Are they gonna pay for them? We always want to make uh Madera the eye to everybody else. We can't do it like Clovis do or like Fresno do. We have to do what Maderans do. And that's just trying to see what we need to provide for our people that wants to live here. Jobs are hard right now. The COVID didn't help us none. It hindered us. A lot of people without a work. But we have to rebuild and we can do that. But we all have to think together to stay together. But you have to do it with understanding peace and love. If you don't have those three compassion, we're just spinning our wheels. It's not about what somebody said that was wrong, it's about how we say everything that is right. Thank you.
George.
Ladies, thank you again for the question. And if you're anything like me, a lifelong resident, you know that very little has changed. Walmart's still in the same place and that's really all we have, apart from maybe Marshalls and the shopping center in front. I think i- it's it's unfortunate that as a city, we're not doing more to reach out to businesses. I made a call last week to uh to hone outlets, I believe is their name. They're the ones right as you go into Los Angeles. And I told them, what do you think about coming to, what would you think about coming to Madera if the opportunity were to rise? Madera is a central hub. I mean, we're the heart of California. We. Everyone who goes to Los Angeles, San Francisco, Sacramento crosses through Madera if they go down ninety-nine. We, why do you think the truck stops are coming here? Because there's a lot of traffic. So we have to do an intentional effort to invite businesses to Madera and that includes. We may not be blindly telling them, hey, don't, you know, we don't want you here, but what we are doing is putting restrictions on them. Like cosmetic restrictions to build sidewalks or infrastructure that the city can take over and be reimbursed later. We need to welcome outlets. We need to welcome a target like Los Angeles. Why does Los Angeles seem to target Hobby Lobby, right? We need to be receptive of them so that our taxpayer money comes and stays in Madera to form programs for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's, we're moving to the next question. So Belba, if I could have you skip your next question, but go to the next one that starts the City of Madera, please. And I apologize, we we do have a lot of questions and so I'm gonna be asking the panel to skip a few because we have. I want to try to get the questions from the public asked and we have about fifteen minutes left. The City of Madera has a well-deserved reputation for being unfriendly to small businesses. As evidenced by the length of time that it takes to process the applications for business license and use permits. In addition, the number of hoops that applicants are required to jump through in order to obtain a business license can be daunting. And discouraging to the applicant. Would you be willing, if elected or re-elected. To appoint a single person to assist applicants with the process and essentially. Fast-track all applications for business license and use permits. And would you be willing to report to the public an open council session, the length of time that each application takes to approve. From when it is first submitted in order to restore public confidence in the process? Jose, you're first on the response.
Thank you for the question, Belba. Uh you know, I I think that uh like I said earlier, it's customer service. Because we're a public entity that does not exempt us from providing the service. I run a business. And the moment that I cannot provide the service to a client, that client to run off somewhere else and find service elsewhere. You know, one one of the greatest things that I see is um is. Is that we we've hired a new city manager. This was an issue that was existing prior to me coming on 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 the city council. And that was always that we we it was, the reputation that we had is that we cannot get anything done in our city. Look, give this new city manager a chance. This city council is is continuing to make strides that we haven't made for for decades. We're looking forward to to provide the service that's needed for any any developer, any anyone interested in building in Madera. Uh but we're we're making it happen. That's why we we've made some some strides here in the in the council in the last two years. And given the continuity, we can continue to do that moving forward. So thank you.
Anita.
Yes. We need to use. Where we sit here on this committee and we discuss all the things that need to be done. In welcoming businesses, we need to be able to streamline some of the you, the holes that they need to jump through. To be able to get a business here. As far as taking them through different avenues. Find out what their needs are. Let us go to them. Let us ask, what is it that we can do to help you to want to be here? And then eliminate some of the holes that they have to jump through. Give them a reason to want to be here in Madera. And help to be able to develop our our city. We need all the help that we can get and we need all the people that we can get. The businesses to come into Madera to be able to make it a better place. So let's eliminate all the extras and if we need to use our city manager and he's he's a dynamic young man. Let him do what he needs to do to be able to work with us and also work with the new businesses that are coming in. Thank you.
Donald.
Well, you know, that's a good question. All the questions have been good. But what we do, and I've had people call me and tell me about uh they having issues with getting their license and their permits and. And what I do, I just call down there and find out what the problem is. Sometimes it takes PR, public relations. You don't always have to go to the city manager if they come to you. Call and make a phone call and that way it's about getting answers. How can we make this easier? We are building in Madera. A lot of buildings out there that people don't even know that's in Madera yet. Companies have come to Madera, they root here. Just companies is what's gonna build Madera. Not these little little stores. From the big ones, you make little and then you grow. And we're doing a good job with that, but people want to buy a license, we can work on that. Everybody should have somebody to go to to make sure they issues are being talked about and dealt with. And we can do that. As elected officials, that is our job. Not always the city manager, but it's our job. So if we all work together, we can do it. Thank you.
George.
Belba, thank you for your question. Small businesses is, I'm sure many of our wiser individuals in this call know are the pride and joy of Madera. Madera was built on small businesses, on people coming together and and forming whether it was uh. Uh fruit stands or uh paper stores or uh you know, printery shops, stuff like that is they are the pride and joy. And it is unfortunate that we have so many hoops and restrictions. And just the smallest of things that don't really matter when it comes to permitting. I don't think that individual, that we as city councilman, it has to get to the point where we as city council members have to call to find out where the application is. That is an unfair treatment. Everyone should should be able to feel the confident that I want to start a business. I want to get ahead in life. We should empower them to do so. And I agree, I think that we ought to appoint somebody, an advocate, an ambassador of sorts to city council. That will is ensure the transparency of this entire process. Are we helping some people out forms to form small businesses? And not others? Is there discrimination of that sort? And address that and and that whatever discrimination may be going on. I agree, we should appoint an ambassador. Um we should strive to uh revive the pride and joy of Madera that we find in small businesses.
Okay, Derek.
Okay, um you know, I've been involved with the um our small bit business office and um. We have streamlined some of the, you know, other steps so that it make it more friendly, uh business friendly for for businesses. You know, so they can see upfront what what steps they have to do in order to open their business and maintain it. You know, we've been over backward, you know, and trying to help them obtain loans and stuff like that. I want to drill on um, talk about also online businesses are gaining real strength as opposed to brick and mortar businesses. And you can see right now during the um epidemic, you know, um a lot of businesses that are are going online. And so I I like to say that um, you know, restaurants um and small businesses that. They cater to uh, you know, to our our citizens, you know. Where we, we need to uh just back them and be help them be able to um. Um survive. The first five years is is one of the reasons why. A lot, many of them fail if they did not support it. Thank you.
Jose. Oh, great.
I answered the first one. Thank you, Debbie. I'll do it again if you like.
New question.
My apologies. We're running a little bit late. I was a little bit distracted. I was emailing the candidates for the school board, letting them know that we're running a little late. So we're on to the next question. So I'm going to provide some guidance. I want to make sure we get this final question. Answer that is from the community. So uh for our two panel members, uh I would like to make sure that we ask. I think there's two questions and I'll ask the candidates to address in their closing statement, one of them. So on the second page, Belba, can you ask the sec, the first question that you have listed on the second page? That is a community question. Does that be the one? Sacramento encourages. Say that again? Yeah, Sacramento encourages. Okay, Sacramento encourages project labor agreements as a tool to ensure local jobs at the prevailing wage. So given our housing needs, would you consider project labor agreements on new single-family resident development? In order to promote local good paying jobs? Anita. You're at first.
Say that again? Can you repeat that again, please?
Sacramento encourages project labor agreements as a tool to ensure local jobs at prevailing wage. So given our housing needs, would you consider project labor agreements on new single-family residential developments? In order to promote local good paying jobs?
What I would promote is bringing in lower homes, lower incomes. In order for us to be able to start, we have to start somewhere. And if we have to start at the bottom, bringing in lower paying wage jobs. Which everyone should at least be middle class. Right now, we have young people that are working and some people are still only making seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. So how can you find a home to be able to purchase, to be able to live, if that's all you're surviving on? Some people happen to have three and four jobs in order to do that. So to bring in upper-class and middle-class homes to be able to make this happen. We need lower in lower income jobs. And in order doing that, we need to have homes to facilitate that. We need to have the jobs to be able to maintain the homes that we're going to live in. And in order to do that, we have to have people to come in with businesses that will provide jobs. So a prevailing wage for prevailing home, prevailing income, it all needs to go straight across the board. We can't do one without the other and we can't survive if we don't have the incomes. Thank you.
Donald.
Well, it's hard to answer those kind of questions and what the state does. All we have to do in Madera is try to make it happen for us. We know that jobs are hard to find, wages not going up. And homes are costing more than what it takes to run a job. If you're gonna build a home, we talk about affordable homes, houses. Then we have to come out of that big number picture because we don't have the income in Madera in order to farm or to live in those kind of environments. But you get what you pay for. You want something nice, you have to sacrifice. And in Madera, as your city council, I will help them find a way to where all these issues that they're having with the city is being corrected. We as council leaders, we strive to make our city responsible for what is wrong. We take them, just like we do in our own houses. We have to lead. And the way we lead is by addressing the issue. So far, this council has not ran away from the facts. Some things in government, this takes a little bit longer. Thank you.
George.
Thank you again, Belba, for the question. I I I would caution anyone uh to, when it comes to imposing more restrictions. Or more regulations on on anything, especially if it's coming as a recommendation. From a higher, whether it's state or federal entity. I think Donald uh hit the nail right on the head is we ought to take into account our particular circumstances in Madera. And what is going to empower our residents to thrive and to succeed. I mentioned earlier in a economy in California that is constantly, constantly evolving. So PLA's uh project labor agreements, they, there's, I'm sure some benefits to them. There's benefits that are that will help. To uh ensure that lower income families are able to have an adjustable living condition. But we we have to take that into account. Uh this would be forming uh an investigatory committee to to look into that. But when it comes to restrictions, adding more restrictions on private, on private companies, even on public companies. We ought to be very careful because that just suppresses a community. Thank you for your question.
Derek.
And um I like to say that for, you know, I'm agreement with prevailing wages, but. But but I would like our local uh businesses to in order to, in order to be able to uh. Participate in in those in those jobs also. You know, the legal cities, you know, they they're against the state and overriding the city power. You know, the cities, we don't want to relinquish our our power. And because then it watered down our our influences. So uh I'm in favor of just the city. Being able to pay for um prevailing wages, but but I don't want the state to override. You know, our our power and 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 um making sure that our 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 citizens. Can have good jobs also. Thank you.
Hey, Jose.
Uh thank you, Debbie. It's been said that businesses are fleeing California and and some businesses could be doing the same in our city. Adding any PLA agreements within local developers that uh would would construct uh residential housing. Would only be a detriment to them unless you know what it costs to build a home, then there's no reason why you should be voting on anything. I mean, obviously developers have to go through development impact, the school fees, construction costs, labor. Adding any additional red tape to that, that's already mandated by the local zoning and local uh uh permitting process. Is already a strain in itself. So I I too would say, you know, I I I support prevailing wages where they belong in public. In public uh projects, federal projects, you know, you have your IRS, you have your postal service. Uh and school service and all that. I'm very supportive of all that. But when it comes to small businesses, let small businesses in the market regulate itself. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are gonna go into closing statements now because we've got to get to the next forum. However, I do want to share with you. That there were two, several questions that we didn't get to ask. Some of them were somewhat duplicated. But in your closing statements, I just want to share these two questions related to the pandemic and you could. And you could choose to address something about them in your closing statements. You get a minute and a half. And and it would happen if I had launched it. Belba, can you provide those two questions regarding COVID on that second page? The last two questions.
So the first one is, if the state does not allow us to open, would you look into making us a sanctuary city like Atwater? Why or why not? The second part of that question is, the governor came out with new guidelines restricting families in your own home. Will you instruct the police to enforce it?
So you each do have a minute and a half. If you want to just touch on that and then provide your closing, I'd very much appreciate that. And Don, Donald, you are starting.
Oh. You know, COVID is a hard thing to deal with. Nobody has a true answer yet. So as we look around our city, what are we gonna do to make it happen? If we open up small business, are we taking a risk? Is it real? Yes, COVID is real. People are really dying from it. People are really getting sick. But that's like anything. You have to deal with the issues as they come before you. In Madera, we want to make sure that all our residents are protected. I don't think it's gonna take the police department to go out there and cite everybody, because then we'd never get out of court, or they'll never get to go to court. And that's another tax that's gonna be on our residents. We just have to make sure and talk to one another to make sure this does take place. People wear masks. People do their job, clean their buildings, clean their places. But if we don't, no matter how many policies or officer or laws that you make, it's not gonna change what's already taken effect. With our public health department, I think they're doing a tremendous job in Madera that's keeping most of us safe. Sure, there's cases everywhere, but we can do better by working together. Thank you.
And these are your closing statements. George?
Thank you, Debbie, for your question, and thank you, Belba, for that as well. I, I would definitely look into making Madera Sanctuary City for businesses. And because we see this issue growing, small businesses are closing at a rapid pace because they're still expected to pay the fees associated with their brick and mortar building without having any customers. We can't expect them to survive, and we want to push small, small businesses forward in our city. But we're not providing any avenue for that. So I would be open to looking into that. In terms of restricting families from meeting with one another and calling on our law enforcement officials to do that uncomfortable task of separating them in their own homes? No, I think that's ridiculous. I think, I, I appreciate Governor Newsom's response to a sense of ensuring the safety of our residents here in California. But that draconian mentality of separating families in this capacity with at their own home, no, that's breaching into, into private space. I don't think we have the responsibility nor the right to do that. Public space is different, of course. Above all, I just, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for, and all of, all of you here today. And I, I want to thank those who will be viewing on the methods of communication in later time. I've had the, the honor and the blessing, really, of meeting over ninety-eight percent of the constituents in District Two within the last few weeks. And their encouragement, their trust is amazing, and I, I seek to serve the city with the strongest of passions and with accountability and transparency, and serve our city well and bring us into prosperity tomorrow, beginning today. Thank you.
Derek?
Yes, can you answer, say the question one more time, please?
In the closing statement, I'll have Belba reread. There was two questions that we weren't able to get to. You're welcome to address them or not in your closing statement.
Okay.
Those questions are, if the state does not allow us to open, would you look into making us a sanctuary city like Atwater? Why or why not? Second part of that is, the governor came out with new guidelines restricting family in your own home. Would, will you instruct police to enforce it?
Okay, for instance, restricting family in their own home, I think that's an overreach. You know, we have civil rights, and I don't think the government should overstep the boundary in, in our family. And also for sanctuary cities, yes, I think we should have sanctuary cities so that we can keep our businesses open because the businesses are being closed and people are suffering. You know, one out of four young people are considering suicide. You know, I read that today. Underlying health problem, if you have that, stay home. Because less than one percent of the people are really affected by COVID. And, and our young people, they opened up the schools, let them go to schools. You know, you can't, the regular flu is, is just as bad as COVID. And, 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 and the medicine that President Trump have taken should be distributed to all those who are in the hospital suffering from COVID. So, yes, we should have a sanctuary city. I, I talked to the city manager before about opening up our city businesses. And, and he said that, well, if we do that, then it will take off all our funds away from us. You know, sometimes you have to sometimes you have to put our, our citizen first as opposed to have the federal, have the state come in with your draconian rules. Thank you.
Jose?
Thank you, Debbie, and I appreciate the, the question, Belba. Thank you so much. I will say that I'm always open to having our cities continue their business. So as long as we follow precautions from our public health, I think every city is unique in itself. Certain cities are more urbanized than others. But I think that if we follow certain precautions from our public health director, I think we can certainly make the city be prosperous again with, with respects to our, our businesses. As far as getting the law enforcement involved, I think that, that would be a measures that I don't, I don't see the city imposing. I think, you know, families gotta be families, right? But taking the measures, I think we've already stopped a lot of the, the spread, and we can do a better job. If we continue to use a mask, continue to do our, our social distance, and continue to just wash our hands. You'd be surprised how that, that alone does a lot. So just following good precautions that the, the county would, would advise us to do is fine. Again, I don't think we have to go to those measures as proposed by our governor. That you can leave to the local authorities to take care of that. I, I will end up by saying this, when you elected me, you elected me to ensure that our tax dollars were well spent. We made extensive cuts to executive salaries. We hired a new city manager, city finance director, auditors, to ensure that our tax dollars are well spent. Making our, our, our families our number one priority. Again, we increased police officers so that we can provide that customer service that we want to have, building a good plan for jobs, fighting to protect our water, which is something that we not talk about, but something so huge. The bleeding aquifer is, is happening over and over. We need to do something together with the local partners like MID to be able to stabilize our water rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
Yes, thank you to the committee. Thank you to Debbie. Thank you to Belba. And to each one of the committee members, also to the young ladies from the students. I want to thank you for just allowing me to be here and reaching out to the people of Madera Sanctuary City. That's a question. One thing I will say, I would not want anyone to come in my home and tell me that my grandbabies or great-grandbabies could not be here, the police to walk into my house and divide me. All we need to do is continue to wash our hands. Social distancing, twenty minutes, twenty seconds to wash your hands, wear your masks. How hard is that? You know, we speak on all the things that the governor has said, all the things that, you know, the sanctuary city. But what happened to common sense? Each one of us were raised. And we use our common sense to do the things that we need to do. Continue to just focus on maintaining your own health. We have people that have been sick. How many have had people to die from COVID? It, it's real, and it's painful to bury someone. It's painful to see people that are suffering in the hospitals. So in order for us to maintain what we're going through right now, Madera is much less, the numbers, I watch them every day, the numbers are much less than some of the other cities. Fresno, Tulare, other places of that nature. So we are doing something right. I volunteered at the hospital, and they said we can't come back. Why? Because I'm over sixty-five. So we need to continue to do the same thing, maintain our city, and watch out for each other. And God bless each and every one of you, and thank you.
All right, that concludes the candidate's forum for city council. I want to, I know you've all thanked the chamber, but I really want to make sure we're acknowledging the Coalition for Community Justice and their youth leaders. It's awesome that our young people take such an interest in the political process, and I applaud them for that. I'd like to thank each and every one of you also for providing leadership, for taking time and for providing leadership, for taking time and the care to even consider running for local office. We appreciate the fact that, that you have the compassion and the passion for our community. So thank you.